Thereabouts thoughts, let's go with the ladies first.
No, I I'm a little surprised.
Just because you're white doesn't mean you get to go first.
We didn't even know that these people weren't police until their story came out in the South Seattle Emerald.
Yeah, and even then, even then, it wasn't, it was her, it was an opinion piece as well written, it was very thorough. As she interviewed people at the L C B. But then you still waited until after something else happened. The one from the L C B that said they're not cops.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, yes. That one, that's the most important one of all, because they admitted it themselves, that they don't have any police power. So why, why did y'all police us and use police power um to take us down? And now you don't have police power, so that means it needs to go back retroactive to everybody you policed out when you weren't police. Then that they need to be restored, god damn it.
It's almost like I'm in a space where I'm asking someone for something or asking to be heard. Or begging, right? I'm begging to be heard, I'm begging to be seen and understood. And it actually makes you feel very nervous, uncomfortable. They're the liquor control board, they're the board. They're supposed to be the people that I come to when I have an issue. And they're supposed to help me, not feel like I'm looking up to them and they're looking down on me and I'm feeling intimidated. I shouldn't be intimidated by the board, right? I should not.
That study, real quick, that study I spoke to, keep, put a pin in that, okay? That study that I spoke to talks about that, it was the, 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 there's a lot, there was. It was the Government Accountability Institute that I mentioned, it was filed in our, in, in the federal lawsuit with Novak and, and Sinjo Hall. Okay, yeah, 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 guys, so I just want to introduce the show a little bit, I, I think today. Uh, the, the subjects for discussion were being kicked out of Seattle City Council meeting the other day, or it, rather than. I won't say kicked out, but not invited in once you were already registered there. Um, that was crazy and that fiasco, so we're gonna cover that. And a little bit of my history with Seattle City Council too, because they know me quite well. Well, good before them, you saw that picture I posted from the Intercept um magazine. That was about the mortgage crisis fraud and cover up and Seattle City Council, they didn't, they ignored their own hired consultant. Who happened to be an industry colleague of mine named Marie McDonald. And so she told them to sue MERS in no uncertain terms uh to help, you know, get money out for the homeless and everything and, and do the right thing, right? And they were like, oh, you know, I used to make videos for Shama Swan when she used to protest against the banks. See, I was there for all that. And, and now I'm like persona non grata, but you know, I was there, I'm not gonna hear, you know, I was, I was doing that. You know, I had that forum with Seattle City Council and Ansel Hurst, the, the hers, the writer from the um. The stranger, I picked him to co-host it with me, I have it on video, it's, it's right there on my mortgage movie channel. You know, and now all of a sudden, it's like, oh, that King guy, better stay away from him, man, he's, he's one of those. He's one of those educated, he like a field nigga, but.
There it is.
Field nigga, but I have the education, we don't know what to do with him. You know, Nat Turner and shit sitting here, you know? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so anyway, that's Seattle City Council in a nutshell, and so Kevin, you come back in and join on that. And then I figured we'll just have Libby uh update a couple of things that, what she went through today when she was talking um earlier at the cannabis uh, at this uh. L C B board meeting and just that experience for her and stepping into that space now uh where. Neither of you are trained for it and plus the added adversity of it being in your own realm and, and, and impacting you. I hate making impacting a verb, that's bullshit, man, it has something that has such a, a majestic, uh if you will, um. But that's not a good word either, but something such a, of a magnitude of, of, of impact that it has on you. If you can speak to that for a little bit, and Kevin's spoken to it before, and feel free to, to occupy that space for a while, then we'll get back to the nuggets. And we'll analyze the difference between Oscars and you using the A C L U's own Amicus brief. All right, you're up.
Okay, perfect. So I, it actually was overwhelming. I didn't, I mean, i- i- it's interesting because I have a lot to say, right? And of course, I'm not a public speaker, I'm not, you know, that's not what I do, but. It's almost like you're. It's almost like I'm in a space where I'm asking someone for something or asking to be heard. Or begging, right? I'm begging to be heard, I'm begging to be seen and understood. And it actually makes you feel very nervous, uncomfortable, it, it felt like I'm, I'm, I'm looking. Up, right, to people that we're all, they're all people, I should be looking, I should feel like they're on the same level as.
Yeah.
Right? Cause there isn't really a such thing, they're the liquor control board, they're the board. They're supposed to be the people that I come to when I have an issue and they're supposed to help me. Not feel like I'm looking up to them and they're looking down on me and I'm feeling intimidated, I shouldn't be intimidated by the board, right? I should not.
That study, real quick, that study I spoke to, keep, put a pin in that, okay? That study that I spoke to talks about that, it was the, 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 there's a lot, there was. It was the Government Accountability Institute that I mentioned, it was filed in our, in, in the federal lawsuit with Novak and, and Sinjo Hall. Uh, so that's there, in that piece, they talk about it, and then there was another, there was a letter written by ten state reps. Uh, about the uh animosity from L C B and how, and all, how it's manifested, all of that, okay? And that's out there, and that's, that's filed in federal court too, all of these things that point toward arbitrary and capricious actions. On the part of the L C B, which again, provides you a basis for recovery under forty-two U S Code. Eighty-one, eighty-three, eighty-five, all those, you know?
Right.
All of those. Uh, I'm sorry, I, you know, I, I did it. Get it in there, as the lawyer, I have to get it in there.
Right, and, and it's, and it's, and it's interesting because really, wholeheartedly, right? I, when I'm telling them, I'm expecting for them to say, you know what, okay, you're right, we're gonna figure, like, that's it, not having to go. Back and forth, back and forth, they're not doing anything that, it feels, it feels very, very uncomfortable. Because I, it, it should only take one time, it's kind of like this, if um. You know, i- i- usually when someone comes to someone one with a complaint or they, or somewhat of an issue. It's not like, okay, they just sit there and then. You keep coming back with the issue over and over and over again and nothing's being done. Or, or kind of like how I run my household, if one of my children is having an issue with the other. And they say, well mommy, my brother's bothering my stuff, let's say, for example, I'm not gonna sit there and say, okay, and then he comes tell me again, okay? And they come tell me again, okay, I'm gonna do something about it, right? I'm gonna address it. Especially if I feel like the, you know, the person that's bringing the complaint or the issue to me is being done wrong. Or there needs to be some type of resolve, I'm going to do something about it, I'm not gonna sit there and continue to listen. Or, or not listen or ignore it over and over again, and that feels very uncomfortable. Because it's almost like repetitious, but I know that it needs to be done, I, it needs to be heard. And I've talked back when I was going through the process, I did speak to the liquor control board, like people one-on-one, right? I'm talking to them and telling them, okay, this isn't right, um, and I tried to make, I tried to make it right, right? I tried to basically do what they, wh- what they were saying was wrong.
Basically, this, people, people tuning in now understand, you were one of the few, uh, you're the only black person that I know of who actually. Passed the lottery, okay? I don't know if anybody else did, and I can, I can tell you a quick story too about uh. How people pass lotteries in Massachusetts, Whitey Bulger, like, won the lottery, uh, sure he did, after becoming an informant for the. You know, Whitey Bulger won the lottery, sure he did. Okay?
Right.
And there's another cop out of um Brockton who was doing blow, selling blow in the eighties. And, and, you know, just tooting up the control room, right? And, and so he did time, Sprules was his name, S P R O U L E S, Sprules. That guy gets out after doing his time, guess he won the lottery too, isn't that something? You're in a rare category, you're in there with Whitey Bulger and uh. Police chief, uh, man, you're, you're moving up in the world.
Listen, I told you, I, I, I just, I actually felt, I felt very lucky, a miracle. I believe God blessed me, all that.
It was when it happened, right?
Yeah, I, I did, I was like, okay, I, how luck, it, it was, it was amazing. And, and this is the thing.
When, when you got the notice that you uh.
Well, this is the thing, I watched the liquor control board and their process, like, I babysat it. Everything, like, I, I could tell you who won what, who did what, because I was so af- I was afraid that. You know, it, it was rare, because like I said, when I went to meetings and stuff like that, there wasn't people that looked like me.
Yeah, right.
You know, it would be fifty white people, two blacks possibly, right? From, from different, from different areas, and so, um. Um, I remember in Lacey, they had these meetings, just like going through the process and what they expect. I mean, and people were signing up and showing up, and they had these, like, I think they did it for like a month where you had to come in with thousands of people, right? That came eventually, but it, I didn't see a lot of people that looked like.
Well, you, you wasn't. You know what, you hypothesized that uh, if that's the right word, but uh, I, I, I would say that uh. You put forth a proposition that maybe one of the reasons uh that you got in was because of your name.
I, I, I do not have, I don't have a typical black name, right? Is not, like, there, there's been several times, there's been several times where I know when I showed up somewhere, that they were shocked that. Um, I was black because they were respecting someone white, right? Because they didn't, they weren't, they weren't the person that took the phone call, they were just a person waiting for me to show up, so they didn't know, and, and. Yeah, I don't have a typical black man, so I, and I don't know, I can't, I don't have the proof, but it's interesting that I won, you know, I won the lottery and.
Well, you know what, no, you don't even need the direct proof of that, because you have this, you have the basic knowledge already. Kevin, do, do you know of anybody else who won the damn lottery who's, looks like us?
Anybody who won the lottery?
Yeah, and Kevin, in fact, you were having a discussion with me earlier about um, uh, uh, your discussions at a certain barber shop. Where there are a bunch of you, uh, a bunch of you guys were talking about it and uh, bring that back, bring that forward.
There were several people, including my barber, um, that, that entered and uh, that didn't get picked. And all these guys have good backgrounds, no criminal history, working people, you know, you know, working class, you know, uh, you know, black folk.
But uh. Didn't have four and a half million dollars in fraud judgments against them like, like the, the Whitmers.
Yeah.
Right.
All of these guys, all of these guys, and it, it was several of them, all of them that entered and lost. The, 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 the reasoning that the cannabis board gave them for, that they lost is because they had incorrect.
They had incorrect what?
Incorrect, like paperwork, they're incorrect on their application, so I'm like, um, why not correct it?
Especially if it was nothing that's, that's like fraudulent. Guys, these guys, the Whitmers, they, they internally said it was fraudulent, and you know what their response is? Their response now is to, is to say, um, oh, well, you can't circulate that email. That we have, it, it did say attorney client on it, but it's been circulated for years, man, okay? And other people circulated besides Novak, and it was sent out to him apparently by mistake, because it was a public records request, okay? So instead of addressing the harm, as, instead of addressing the underlying issue, which is, how did this motherfucker get a license? Okay, so instead of addressing that, they're going to like stomp on Novak and me and then try to tell us that we can't. Re, reproduce, they're telling us two things, one, you can't use it in court, which I may not even fight them on, but two, that we can't use it in the public. Uh, uh forum, I, I, we can use it in the public forum, and I'm gonna continue to use it in the public forum, fuck that shit, man. This is like a, we're, you know, we're watchdogs, and this is what happened, you know, um, you're gonna make a fuss over that. Instead of trying to be concerned about how, how they ended up getting licenses when your attorney said, hell no. What is that? Four and a half million dollars in judgments against the Widmer and his wife together. Both of them implicated in wrongdoing, both of them pled the fifth, three, he pled the fifth three times in their failed bankruptcy case. She pled it twice, and that's all in the file, in L C B's file, so. How does it turn from that to them, see, I see a total of four Khalifas up there, if you go to look at the licenses, how does that work? When you, your husband, you're sitting there, and then they even changed the rule for you later. It was just.
No, they didn't change it for me. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, right, which, and here's the thing, I, I took the necessary steps to. Please them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, they, they smacked me in the place, okay, you can't do this, okay, whatever you need me to do, this is what I'm gonna do, right? So what I, and what I'm saying is, I took it upon myself to renunciate any affiliation with my business. From my husband, so, okay, he has nothing to do with this, so if I was to die and pass away, he couldn't get a one red cent out of it. Or anything, he wouldn't get no, he couldn't claim it, nothing, they would not accept it. And which I realized at that time, it really had nothing to, that's when I knew, it had nothing to do with. Me being married to someone incarcerated, it was more of because I was black, and I believe that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I believe that, and, and, and I wanted to comment on um, um, what Kevin was saying. This is interesting, because when I was going through the application process, what was probably a ten-minute, fifteen-minute process? Probably took me about two hours, I sat there in the middle of my floor, I got on the floor, printed out all the paperwork. I even made sure, like, they asked you about your criminal history, and I was trying to think of things, you know, I'm talking about twenty years ago. What I did was I said, I, I started getting nervous, I said, okay, what if they say this isn't, you know, here, you get one shot, they were saying that, okay? If we have to return your application, because they have this lottery thing coming up. I literally just contacted the State Patrol and got my, and ordered my background check and then attached it.
Yeah.
That's, so I didn't want no issues, so, so, oh, you forgot to put this speeding ticket on here, or you forgot to get the driving one out of license on here. I didn't want any issues to come up, so that's. That's how I believe I, because the, the application, let me just say this, the application, there was tricky questions to me. That could be, could have two answers, right, at that time, so I was like, okay, okay, and a, and a few times I called him to clarify, right? Okay.
Sure.
What does this mean?
And then focused on getting it right.
That's right, that's right, because I knew, I, I, cause I learned those lessons a long time ago, if I make a mistake.
Oh, your application has to be twice as tight.
That's right.
Right.
That's right, I can't make a mistake.
Unless you're, unless you're one of their black cronies.
Right.
Another gatekeeper, okay?
Right, that's right, that's right, so I knew that if I made a mistake, I was out, and I couldn't. I didn't, I couldn't make them, I couldn't do that, but they still didn't, they still didn't give me my license, they still, I passed everything. I have, I, I had folks that was willing to um financially back me.
Put up houses for you, everything.
That's right.
Like, all of that.
That's right, that's right.
The black generational wealth issue, okay, and they're trying to keep us from getting that. And you know, New York Life does it too, by the way, I, I, that's another chapter of my life I recorded to the, ooh, but that's not, not now, not now, not now. Let's move on for a minute, guys, let's talk about, um, we, we just uh been here on about twenty minutes. Let's move on to a little bit about Seattle City Council, um, I'm gonna run upstairs and grab my water jug. And once you guys start off about what happened with Seattle City Council on Tuesday. And then I will close off with me looking at some of the documents that the A C L U filed for Oscars.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be right back, guys. Carry on.
Okay, Kevin. I can't hear, I can't hear you, I, his value, okay, I will.
Ke- Kevin, are you?
He's muted.
There it is, can you hear me now?
Now, yeah.
Now.
Oh, man, okay, yeah, I had, I had a, a car full of rugrats, so I wasn't trying to, you know, mess up the audio, but you guys can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, wait, so it's, this is not new, you know, with uh, us going on to meetings and, and, and then having. Technical difficulties, and it's not the first time, and I'm sure it won't be the last time, but. The main thing that we do is we just keep on going, uh, regardless, um, because we're gonna, we're gonna be heard. You know, um, regardless of who doesn't want us to say something, or who tried, you know, people trying to cut deals for us to be quiet and stuff like that.
Right, right.
I haven't it, um, so regardless, but uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's games that have been played and uh. It's, it's, it's nothing, it's nothing new, we just gotta uh move around that shit and keep pressing on, because we're gonna have to, we just gotta make them pay. Cause they ain't gonna, they don't, if they wanted to do it and wanted to help us out, it would, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Even if they would have said, all right, it's gotta be three African Americans per license, we can't give you all one each. We would have been, we, a lot, we would have been well off with that even. But they just said, hell no, nothing, look at the monkeys over there jumping around with all this wealth. Let's go take it away and use it for ourselves, we got bigger guns.
Right.
And we're tired of that shit, man, we ain't having it no more, we just not having it no more, we're not having it.
I agree.
They're playing the statute of limitation game with us, um, so that's what's going on with our, our case right now, they're saying that. Uh, the statute of limitation was three years ago, but that's bullshit, because.
Oh, you mean, or we, three years from when it happened, but.
Yeah, three years from when it happened.
But, but go ahead, that's why that's bullshit. Thoughts in my head about why it's bullshit, but go ahead.
But um, as far as, you know, um, that Luna Ray uh story is concerned. We didn't even know that these people weren't police until their story came out in the South Seattle Emerald.
Yeah, and even then, even then, it wasn't, it was her, it was an opinion piece, it was well-written, it was very thorough. As she interviewed people at the L C B. But then you still waited until after something else happened. No, not, not that one, another one, the one from the L C B that said they're not cops.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes, yes. That one, that's the most important one of all, because they admitted it themselves, that they don't have any police power. So why, why did y'all police us and use police power um to take us down? And now you don't have police power, so that means it needs to go back retroactive to everybody you policed out when you weren't police. Then that they need to be restored, god damn it.
And this includes, this includes, as, as Mike, oh, uh, what's his name, hinted at uh two weeks ago. This includes all the medicals who should have been grandfathered on off in, and they're, they're arguing the grandfather clause doesn't apply too and all that. You'll have to show me that stuff uh one of these days, um, it was, that's what they're arguing about that, I'd like to see that, but uh, oh my goodness. My goodness, man, I, I can't imagine what you're up against with that, with that whole thing, it's crazy.
Overthrow.
And your lawyer.
Overthrow.
It was Mike Asai said that.
Overthrow, he said it was an overthrow, it was supposed to be a merger, but it ended up being an overthrow.
Right, and nobody wants to address that, you know, Mike went about as far as he's gonna go, and you know, Amari's, Amari's not gonna go there. Okay, I've been on his show once, and it was a very uneasy thing, like, we, we respect each other, I'm sure of that, as men. But I'll tell you what, he can't touch what I'm touching, he ain't got my background, or he's better on the, on the production side, he's a genius. But he ain't got what I got, civil rights trial experience and a, and a law school degree, he's, you know, he ain't got that. And, and, and civil rights focus, so nobody has that who's doing what I'm doing, that's the thing. By the way, we were talking about backgrounds a minute ago and how they, how they search up, I got something for you guys. This is something that, I'm only gonna go so far in this discussion thread, but Kevin and I discussed it earlier, I am a hearing officer, okay? I'm not gonna discuss this, that's all y'all need to know, I am a hearing officer, and I had to wait to start forever. You know, you get tested for it, they give you aptitude tests, circumstantial, you know, you have to write out everything, they screen your ass, all right? And I'm a bad motherfucker, so yeah, of course I passed and they wanted me to work, so, okay, cool, I'll work. Well, I'm waiting on my background check to get passed, and I know I don't have anything in there that's material to anything, you know? And, and, but it's taking forever and ever and ever, I finally got them to get it to me. And the peo- the, the people I'm working through, they, they got on their ass too, finally got it, you know what the holdout was? It's on my Facebook page, King County, King County kept stolen, and stolen, and stolen, and stolen, and stolen, and it's like, are you really that feckless? You, you run my fucking digits, bitch, you, you know where I live, uh, there's nothing in my rec- nothing in my file, so what took you so long? I'm gonna find out what took them so fucking long, dude, I was hired four months ago, they, I should have been working for the last three months. Again, cut into a brother's wealth stream, well, wealth, it's something that's dream for me, you know, cut into that. Try to, if you get him out there, if you can't, if you can't yank his balls off, then fucking come, you know, get it financially, you know, get his financial nuts. It's just, it, it is nuts. Nuts, that's today's segment, it's called Nuts to You, bitch.
That, that sounds kind of familiar, if we can't get him with this biological things, let's just starve him out.
Yeah, let's starve him out, man, right, 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 yeah, yeah, um, gosh, so anyway, um, did you guys wanna talk a little bit about, uh, Sinjo is here, hold on. Did you guys wanna talk a little bit about uh getting locked out of Seattle City Council before we move on to the Oscars piece? Yeah, okay.
You guys have something, that's fine, if you guys have something, I'm, that's fine.
Um, no, no, I do, because I, I do. You talked about how they ignored the uh, the, the mortgage consultant, um, Marie McDonald, their own consultant, hey, Sinjo.
Hey, sorry I'm late.
You're good, you're always here, sister, love you.
Love you too.
Um, we, we talked about how they ignored her, but the thing is, we, like, all chipped in. And bought her a ticket and she flew her out here, we had our own mortgage uh, uh, summit with her. And she tried to speak, I have a video, okay, like, when Tim Burgess cut us off, I had that me, that mean mug of Tim Burgess looking at me like, you know? All of these clowns, they, they, they only gave her like two minutes during all this, the, the general public speaking time, that you used to be able to get right in front of them, right? And then they cut her right off, and I'm sitting there like, wow, man, what, you just charged the taxpayers like a lot of money to hire her. She did the job, and then now you're not even like, I'm, I'm the one who leaked the, the report, I don't want you to tell you how I got it, but I leaked it, okay? And then so it'd be, it was national news, and that one reporter covered it, he's a studs Turkle award-winning journalist, right? David Dayan is his name, David Dayan, he covered it, but nobody else wanted to get on it, because they know that, like, I'm a third rail. You know, we can't do anything and associate it with Chris King, because, 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 because what? Because, because you're so filthy and foul, that you can't stand the fact that Chris King knows how to get at you, is that the problem?
That's definitely the problem.
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah.
Dude, all the judges don't like you, because you speak the truth and you throw the true facts, because remember, we had issues with all the, with all my judges too.
Uh huh, not all of them, but there were a couple, you know, there, there, there's a couple that respect me, but there's a couple that just didn't, you know? You'll know.
Actually, they do, listen, they do respect you, but they fear you and they don't want anything to do with you, they know you know your stuff.
Yeah.
They do, they do, but they can't handle you, yeah, that's just, if they, if they, if they, if they could, they would, you know?
I know.
They won't, yeah, they, yeah, they know, they know.
Yep.
Yeah, I can tell.
Let's, let me show you guys now, I'm gonna share the screen, okay? I'm gonna show you guys some of Oscar's brief, which, which applies directly, uh, that, that Kevin dug up and put in his brief, I remember that, you sent me that, you found that shit, that was awesome. Uh, share screen, okay? And I have it pulled right here for once, I'm on point, there it is, Division One Court of Appeals. Uh, my sister gave me a shirt, this, that hell is stupid legal terms, it was like Court of Appeals, Justice for Bananas, anyway. So this was the brief that was written by the A C U and David Zuckerman, who has not once responded to Kevin, really? I mean, like, maybe he said like, whatever, and they could just go away, all right? And there's, I mean, this is a serious brief, guys, this is like, and they talk about the McCoy's claim. Should be analyzed as a total takings, as in Lucas, they cite the Lucas case and, and they say, then they have a backup position of that, even if they did not suffer. A total taking, they're entitled to compensation, okay? And impliedly, I read the uh, the, the report, okay? And then they skimmed around, the court skimmed around, if they didn't really wanna address those issues, but what they did was, what happened with uh. With uh Oscars, which was, guys, a, a black owned bar, we, we've covered that in the show already. Black owned bar, uh, his wife's w- white German immigrant, more than likely white, I, you know, but yeah, yeah, she was, but anyway, um. They, with the, they, they got, uh, L C B went in and, and, and basically set him up, the same way that they kind of set up uh, all the blacks here in medical, you know? Do this, do this, and you're gonna be fine, okay, so anyway, what they did was, even though Oscars was uh definitely not. They have been very proactive in fighting the crack epidemic and all that stuff in the community, upstanding citizens, just like you guys were, okay? And so what they did was, they, they did a sting operation where the drug informants would go into Oscars. And then buy smack or coke or whatever they were buying, drugs, illegal drugs, and then they're, they pinned it on Oscar and them. And took the license for a while, and, you know, so everybody popped up, I showed you guys, we've seen it all before, the stranger ran a story about it. Libertarians were up in arms, people came out, A C L U, they, they wrote this brief. That's on their website, got lawyers, got press coverage, all that stuff, and got this man, this five hundred thousand dollars that he lost in profits. Okay, why are you guys any different? And so what the court did was, they, they, and so they did it under um. The statute, the sting statute, whatever, was they, they, they granted, they granted everything that A C L. the statute, the sting statute, whatever, was they, they, they granted, they granted everything that A C L U wanted, basically. They just did it a certain way to avoid getting into constitutional issues. The courts wanna do that all the time, all right? That's what they do. But, uh, anyway, so that is the quick and dirty with Oscars and there's your argument there. It, uh, it's so that, that statute that they're talking about is a criminal statute. But anyway, they talk about, you know, the fiscal invasion of property or denying all economically beneficial or reproductive use of land. Obviously, if they take your freaking license, you've got no use of land. So that's, that's kind of what they were arguing. And, uh, and they did a great job of it in there, uh. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's just, uh, it's, it's so much to get into. Anyway, let me come on and share. Uh, and that's kind of, it's startling just to know that, what's different now? You know, like, enough of me blabbering, Kevin, anybody else like, why should it be different now? Why can't you guys get that help now?
Man, I wish I knew the answer to it, but, uh, it, it seems like Mike Asai was right, man. Uh, the mer, it should have been a merger, but it was an overthrow. Why do, why would they wanna help out the people who, who threatened them, you know, who they were threatened by? Why would they wanna help out somebody that they overthrown? You know, it's like, uh, if, if, if you take somebody as a damn, uh, prisoner, you know, why are you gonna give them the key to get out at midnight? Why even fuck with them at all if you're gonna, you know, go back and give it back to them? You see what I'm saying? That's not really, that's not how being overthrown and conquered really works. They, 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 they're doing it to take the, the wealth away from you permanently, not just for a time until you find out that you got screwed or something like that. But it's, it meant to be, you know, so it radiates throughout our communities, you know? And, uh, and it, you know, affects our communities. It's not, it, it's not really meant to be given back, but they're gonna give it back because we're gonna make them give it back, or we're gonna do it without you, like we did the first time.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Yeah. Hell with these people. You know, you're gonna, what are you gonna come, come chase us after us with the, the staties? They, they're not gonna come do it. They're not, they're not gonna do it, you know? You know, it's, it's, it's all too deep now. It's all too deep what's going on and we're, we're exposing it and it can't stay under, but for so long. It just can't. You know, we're just four of us sitting here on the screen right now, but there are ramifications. People are watching. And there are some people in the background doing some things now, in fact, some of which I can't even talk to you about.
And where's the N double A C P in, uh, the Washington State African American Cannabis Association? Where is the, uh, Commission on African American Affairs? Where is all these Negro groups, man, uh, that, that are uh, supposed to be helping us out or even not even, just pick up a damn phone, let alone help us, but just hear us.
Yeah, where are they?
Where is everybody at? Yeah. So Jim, Jim Buchanan also knew about the show, but he stumbled on it the first time by accident. He knows about it. Where's he been since he went and vouched for Ali Garrett?
I know.
Since he came on and vouched for Ali Garrett and said he, he's been knowing her for fifteen or twenty years, there's no way she could do this. You know, like I said about Gary Ridgeway, the serial killer, allegedly serial killer. His wife was sleeping next to him for twenty years and didn't know he was out raping and killing girls at night either.
Right, but she could have known and just didn't say nothing or do nothing. That doesn't mean that.
There you go.
Yeah. She, she was just wanting to keep her husband happy. She didn't keep, she, and I, I, and I don't know that for sure, but I'm just saying. Yeah, people will stand by and watch all the time. That's the problem.
But yeah, what, what we seeing here now is, is these, these, these black folks, they know the history. And they know, again, and Ben, oh, that's the ma- major point here is that your lawyer, as you, as, uh, as I mentioned in the discussion today, uh, uh, at the board meeting, your lawyer may have to be subpoenaed because, you know, uh, Mike said that you have a good cause of action under that statute, under the, the, the grandfather clause statute. So obviously, this guy's one of the top cannabis lawyers out here. He's not gonna just talk something off the side of his neck, dude. He, he knows what he's talking about. So what, what would make you say that, counselor? What would make you say such a thing? If it weren't accurate, you know? So that's all part of it. They, they filed that, you told me they filed a motion to dismiss against you. All this stuff is, then they're just trying to run from you right now. That's what they're doing in your lawsuit. Um, absolutely. Then that's what they do. They run like cockroaches, because they are cockroaches. You know, my favorite Al Pacino scene though was, uh, Dog Day Afternoon, when he comes into that bank and he gets it all ready, he's got that long box, you know, and then he breaks open that, uh, I think he's got like a fucking pump action or something, whatever he's got in there. And he's like, and he breaks it out. Oh, man, have you seen, have you seen Dog Day Afternoon?
It's been years, man. It's been a long time. It's been at least twenty years, maybe.
It's a wild movie, man. And the whole thing that's crazy is, you know, the, the lead, the other lead actor in it, um, is the guy that played Fredo in The Godfather, you know, uh, the guy with the big forehead. And, uh, but that movie was based on a true story. The reason he robbed that bank was to get a sex change for his partner. Did you know that?
I did not know that.
Wild story. A wild movie. It's so manic and everything like, to me, that's one of the, the memories I, I, I see. Cause it was one of the first bank robberies that was ever like done on video for real. And so they recreated and these guys had these, the camera guys had like space packs on the back, like, fuck it. It was like, it's like the size of a small safe, you know? Walking around here, trying to.
Damn.
Yeah, Dog Day Afternoon. Anyway, I digress. We've got a minute and a half left or thereabouts. Thoughts? Let's go with the ladies first.
No, I, I'm a little surprised.
Hey, hey, just because you're white doesn't mean you get to go first.
Gonna go first, but then I was like, oh, well.
Well, on, on here is ladies first. You go first.
I was just gonna say, I was, uh, really kind of frustrated with how Patel treated us, uh, treated me the other day when I was talking about what the difference was between the two, um, the two cases. There is really no difference. And he was like, no, we're just gonna have to agree to disagree and like kind of dismiss everything. He wouldn't even let me be like, this is why I'm chiming in on Novak's part. But, you know, everything I tried to speak about, he just kinda cut me off, so.
I know, he, I know, I know how he's playing. I know, I know. He's, he's, he's your buddy up front, but watch your rear. Uh, Livy.
Um, I'm just, I, I'm just really, you know, trying to absorb everything, like, you know, showing up at these meetings, kind of understanding how you can possibly be treated and, you know, getting used to the energy that's there. Um, I'm gonna keep it up. I'm, you know, I feel almost like afraid to death today. I honestly, it was, it was scary. You know, it shouldn't have been like that, but I'm, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not gonna, I'm not going anywhere. I'm gonna stick around. I'm gonna fight the fight. Um, and I'm glad that you're, I'm glad I met you. Because I, it's almost like, where, where, where'd you come from?